I personally believed that we needed to have this type of session and I'm sorry, there's better sessions that we can have dialogue, but it is a dialogue when we exchange in conversation as I'm doing now. And I hope that you can appreciate that the four council that are here today are in agreement that we need to hear from you and we've taken your concerns and we have duly noted what your concerns are. We're here because we are passionate about this community. And there is, this is not an official meeting. This is our opportunity, first opportunity after the judgment has been made, the oral ruling by the judge to come to you, the public, and hear from you and allow you to hear from us as well. And there's not a lot of information that we were able to share with you here because we don't have a lot of information. But as we move forward, we will be investigating a lot of things that have been going on. And those things that have been approved by the EM, they have been dissolved and they're supposed to come back to the council. So every record, everything that, every resolution or an appointment in positions, all of those will come back to the council and that's my commitment to make sure that it does come back before the council and reviewed by me and then voted on by me. So a lot of information that you've shared with us was good information, good dialogue from my perspective. And you know, I meet with individuals and block clubs and associations in my ward and we have good dialogue. But again, this was just our first opportunity to come and bring the public together. And I'm sorry ma'am, but I didn't get your name or slip for you.
It's Dion Freeman.
Dion Freeman.
Commonly pronounced Dion, yes.
Okay, can you give us what you have in five minutes?
Well, I was told there was a council meeting and I'll see that it's unofficial. Before I got here, was everyone here and then everyone left or you guys just decided to stay?
No. It was first announced through a press release that it was going to be a special council meeting, but because we have not received the written order from the judge, we cannot call an official council meeting. And so we're just having a meeting with the community with unofficial business. We can't make any votes or approve anything officially for the city. But we're taking information that you're sharing with us and making sure that you know, we will take note of it.
And I'm sure no council member wants to hear this, but if you want to recall a council member, like I'm in the first district, if I want to recall or get him out of office, what do I do to do that? Like what petition or whatever I need to sign to have him removed?
I'm sure you probably can request information of Eric Mays or some of the other people that's more experienced to help you with that information. I don't think it'd be appropriate for us to divulge that type of information from in this room, even though it's an official...
That's respectful. I just wanted to know because it's really, really on my mind. And I'm just looking at the seating of everyone. I guess is Scott Kincaid, is he the one who's like over the council when it comes back or if it gets to come back?
Yes, he's the president.
Okay, he's the president. Okay. And then our city attorney is who?
Peter Bade.
P.E. Bade?
Peter Bade, B-A-D-E.
And the city clerk is Inez Brown?
Yes, she's here in the back of the room.
And I guess I'm glad to be here. I'm glad Elisa made it out. I rushed to get here and I'm glad you all decided to stay so at least we can get some of our questions answered and come together as a community really for peace and unity.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you speak again, Mr. Mays, I do want to make a couple of statements and answer a couple of the questions that were brought before us today. I want to assure you all that the stuff that you brought before us today did not fall on deaf ears. I view this meeting as a real start, a real start of a community coming together, gelling together, working together for the improvement and empowerment of the city of Flint. I heard what Mrs. Taylor said about the dialogue about what needs to happen in schools. Usually we don't talk about what happens in schools here because we're the city council and they're governed by a Flint School Board. But I saw my colleague on TV at the school board meeting speaking out for school in his district and I think that was commendable and I want to applaud him for doing that because that is the type of thing that we need to have happen. Two-thirds of the kids in the city of Flint are dropping out of school. I don't have to share that with Councilman Nolan because he's a teacher and I don't have to scare that with Councilman Lawler because he works with Brothers Valley Bloodshed and Councilman Sargent and I work a lot with kid programs. But we do have to take a proactive stand as a community to make sure that we do things to help. How can we help kids from this perch here? How can we present assets, consistent revenue streams when we're already on a tight budget? We just can't talk about it. We have to really perform things. We have to really come up with some things. Like Nyire said, we have to have vision. We have to come up with something and we have to do things like Mr. Amir said, some things out of the box. In the city of Flint, well, in Genesee County, you have 32 units of government. Out of the 32 units of government, Flint is the largest in Genesee County. In the state of Michigan, they have what you call a universal franchise agreement with all Comcast, Charter, AT&amp;T providers where they give a certain amount of their revenue to the municipality in which they sit. In the city of Flint, we have not realized the maximum amount of resources or revenue that we can get from Comcast. We generate about $10 million a year of fees that Comcast makes off of the subscribers in the city of Flint. What you don't know is 5% of that money comes to this municipality, but we can get 7% and we can do like other municipalities, take the additional 2% that we can get from Comcast and give it over to the Flint schools so they can have additional curriculum for kids, keeping them in school, different type of curriculums. And we propose to have a media center and that could be an ongoing revenue stream, but we have ran into a lot of impediments. I do want to compliment my colleague, Councilman Lawler, for calling this informational meeting that was supposed to be a special council meeting because you guys don't understand what type of impediments have been placed in our way before we even got to this position. We had to go through two legal opinions to even get to this point. So we have to really do a lot and fight a lot to get to the point to hear you. And I want to make sure that you understand that we sit up here together, understanding that we have to hear from you first. We don't want to be muzzled by emergency manner as a council nor as a public. And I compliment you all for standing up in the fight, but now we have to elevate the fight together. And I'm going to not only talk about what the problem is, but I'm going to also make suggestions about what we need to do and provide a watch list for you, the residents. I do believe, and this is my opinion, that you have been robbed by your water and sewer rates. I've always said that it needs to be a forensic audit done on the water and sewer fund because I do believe that you are overcharged every single month, but we need your help to press forward, to get, so we can get through some of the bureaucracy, so we can get the forensic audit. And I'll answer your question because it is going to be a dialogue, but I do want to point out an example, helping you understand how to read your water bill so you can be the first line of defense when you are overcharged. Now, in the city of Flint, just because you are a user of the water system, you are charged $41.43 before you use any water at all. You are then charged $6.88 for each unit of water. And just so you can get an understanding of what a unit of water is, is 748 gallons of water. Then you are also charged $3.31 for the sewage on the water. So you just basically figure you charge about $10 for each unit of water that you use. Now, if you look at your bill and the average bill in the city of Flint for a family is usually about, you usually get charged for about six units of water. Now I'm going to do the quick math for you. Six units of water is $40.08 plus the sewage, $19.86. Add into $41 that you charge without using any water at all is 41 dollars. That's a total of about $101 and that's about the average bill in the city of Flint, six units of water. Now remember, each unit is 748 gallons. So six units is 4,488 gallons of water. That is more water than it takes to fill a swimming pool up 12 by 12, five feet deep. How many of you use that much water a month? You have to look on the bottom of your bill to see if it's an A there or E there, if it's an actual read or estimated read. So you have to be the first line of defense if you are overcharged. Just don't complain about it and say I'm paying too much, but we have to identify these problems because I do believe that we are all overcharged and we need a forensic audit of what is going on. Now, we know sometimes people are paid out of the water and sewer fund that don't work inside the sewer and water fund and money was borrowed because the state said so in their opinion, not opinion, in their fact finding scope. But we need to talk about that before they start talking about anything else. So the first line of defense, we have to stand up together. I know you have a question, but Mr. Mays is at the mic. Mr. Mays, would you yield to him for his question?
Yeah, I wanted to address the water issue. They did a study and we're losing through theft and mismanagement about 40% of our water. So that's probably one of the reasons why the water is so high. If we had, if we could actually hire competent people, but dealing with the personnel people that the mayor has hired and different individuals that were already in there through incompetency, the city of Flint is paying a lot more money than they probably should have all along. So if, let's say for instance, that we're receiving about $35 million in revenue in water, then you figure about 17 or 10 million of that, we just throwing or flushing down the toilet.
And I do understand that because when it was a physical audit done of our infrastructure for the water system, it was told that 30% of the water that we get from Detroit is leaking out in the streets. It's just leaking. 30%. So you got to quantify that to dollars and cents. That means 30 cents on every dollar that you pay are being washed away in the streets. And so somebody has to pay for that. And what happens is the residents of the city of Flint, now the residents of the city of Flint or the municipality of the city of Flint controls the water for this area, for Genesee County. We buy the water from Detroit and then we sell to the out county area, Flushing, Davidson, Grand Blank and so on. But when you look at it, they pay three times less for the water that we sell them based upon the problem that we have internally. Go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jeremy Royer. I live in Flint Township and undergraduate at Kettering University. There's three issues with the water and the way I see it is, one, you guys are going to have to take the heat for, let's say, 30-plus years of mismanagement when it comes to our water. Number two is water is a public service. You know, it's a fundamental right. Why in the world is there somebody profiting off of our fundamental right to water? That is unethical, period. We should have a counter initiative to not only deal with the heat that's going to come with the injustice due to overbilling, but also bring attention to the public that it is a fundamental right to have water in your house and in your city. And number three is, I'm sure the federal government has initiatives and grants so therefore we can help collect rainwater and various green methods including recycling human waste. I don't know if the Congress or the public, but the astronauts do it. Recycling human waste can bring the energy water... On top of collecting rainwater in order to minimize our natural resource. There has to be something and those are, that's a really, really big topic.
Right. And we have to really set, we have, as a community, we have to set an agenda just around the water issue and tackle these things one at a time. First, weed out the corruption, the infrastructure problem, and then a real dialogue has to be addressed about having our own water resources here in the community. Because nobody ever really talked about or had the real dialogue about using Flint River Water as a primary source of water in this community. This community was first established with drinking Flint River Water and we had to talk about those type of things realistically because when we talk about economic issues, this is one of the biggest things that I receive from my constituents calls about the high cost of water and it's a necessity. It's a necessity. So we have to develop an agenda. And so in the next coming weeks, I'm going to be talking about this every week, setting up a round table like Nyire said, with setting up a real agenda with the people who use water, pay for water in this community about how we are to be able to get that resource to us. They talk about the pipeline and generating new jobs and different jobs and paying $628 million for the construction. Our buy-in will be about $174 million for the Caradine Water Authority to build that pipeline. But we have to also look at all options on the table that's best for the residents of the city of Flint. We remember about the Swedish biogas. Does anybody remember about the Swedish biogas a few years ago?
Right.
They talked about jobs being provided. We need to come back to the community with a report card. They've been there two and a half years. And to my count, I think they only have established one job and it's your water plant. Mr. Mays, go ahead.
May I say this? I really appreciate how, you know, y'all just dealt with the water issue and the water audit and all of that. You got issues such as water, jobs, crime. Y'all gonna have an issue creep up on you and it's gonna be, do certain employees who were wrongfully gone get their back paid since they've been gone. You gonna have issues creep up on you that gonna say, when you null and void those appointed contracts of Mike Brown them, do they have to pay that money back? You gonna have a lot of issues that's fixing to in you that you, once you have that power, possibly for only three days. See, I think what we're missing here is the urgency. BB, before you came in, I congratulated Lawler for showing up and I must congratulate you because you four people have got a head start on the others. This was a victory for the people, open meetings and y'all practicing and it's going well. But I wanted to come here and leave here hearing y'all say publicly what your strategy is to stay in power. And that ain't happened yet. I believe the strategy to stay in power has been laid out and y'all catching on late, but it's some people who already been helping you. I'm gonna give you a prime example, Sam Mumma and Larry Warwick. Stand up for democracy. See, everything I've gathered by catching on late is telling me that them petitions get verified, he lose some power and possibly can stay out. But that might not happen to May. So that mean you gotta stay in power the rest of March and April. That's what's germane. How do you do it? You can't do it with a vote of seven to two, BB, not to go to court. I say that that man is giving bad legal advice. I said he gave bad legal advice when he violated the Opens Meetings Act when he used to have y'all not let us comment in committee meeting. So I'm saying that, BB, because I can guarantee you 100%. If we had filed in Circuit Court within 60 days of those violations in the committee room, all y'all actions would be null and void. So that's why I say we up to four. I hope y'all leave here announcing where you stand. You want to keep power, you ain't conceding to let him come in here and do what you can do. Because you can spend long hours, just like right now, we ready to go, but you don't know, maybe some of these intelligent people gonna piggyback. But you finna have to spend long hours in a short period of time to use the power that you got, maybe temporarily. I think you can keep it permanently. I think Paul Jordan's actions is all state court actions. I don't think nothing has been filed on federal violations and injunctions asked for. Somebody might have to spearhead that because they finna come back and do it right and try to take power. What's important in the public meeting that I want to see, not just with council peoples, but with faith-based people, Stand Up For Democracy and others, I want to see that meeting where when we leave out, we got the strategy to win the open meetings and then keep them out. Win the voting rights and keep them out. Win the contract clause and keep them out. Get state injunctions, federal injunctions. And then, once you keep them out, then you circle back on the water, the jobs and the crimes. If people don't organize the issue and tackle them in their own time, it's just a wasted meeting. So I want to hear how this meeting gonna end up. And that's why I got back up because some people, and remember it was a victory for the public, but everybody who approaches the mic who has a right to have input, because y'all like to say germane, you can indulge them, but we've got to stay germane. And the issue on the table now is to, somebody didn't help you get them out. Y'all didn't do it. Now y'all can help keep them out and then tackle the issues. And I think that's what you got to focus on. If you get away from the timing on grouping up to keep them out, Peter Bade ain't gonna tell you. You might have to put you a group of attorneys together on the side. Because legally, we hoping that this victory prove to you, don't, never vote no to get a legal opinion. Vote yes and you will be surprised what you get. And we say that there are some more laid out and we shouldn't have to spend our money and resources. We are the city. Vote and spend your resources and if that legal attorney tell you no, BB and Lawler, trust me, everybody looking and it really looked bad now because it should have been yes. You know what I'm saying? It should have been yes. Peter Bade should have knew about the Open Meetings Act when he told y'all how to violate it in committee room. BB, he didn't even know how to tell Michael Thompson them you can't make unlawful financial transfers. The whole debacle is on the legal opinion. And if you don't trust my legal opinion, right now, convene some lawyers and let's keep them out. I believe legally, you can get more injunctions. I believe you can win. Y'all didn't believe the legal then, believe it now. That's what I want to see come out of the meeting. Convene, let's say the order ain't signed Monday, how many gonna show up? If that order ain't signed Monday, good, because it stretches us closer to May when the signatures get verified. See, they want it signed quick too, so they can do emergency appeals, get back in. We don't care if it ain't signed. Keep meeting. Meet Monday whether it's signed or not. And when we leave today or Monday, we've got our strategies to keep them out and keep y'all in power. If you don't do that, we making our mind up who should be in power. God bless again. Thanks for indulging me. Again, we got to leave with a plan. You got to leave with, one, we want the Ambusman Civil Service back. Two, will we pay their back pay or will we get their money back? They got yours back. Three, will we file in federal court and try to get injunctions on voting rights act in this majority black city? Five, will we file on contract clause? Leave and give the media action. Don't leave and let the media think you convened a meeting with no strategies in action. Put your actions and stuff out in the media and then guess what? Watch the community surround you. God bless.
I think there should be a curfew in Flint for people who have Michigan IDs and no driver's license. That way, you know, people set astray or feel sorry for the person, do something wrong to somebody else. And the drug dealers, they can cover and turn on. Turn, there should be a punishment about that, at least two years in jail or prison. Because that's what's going on. That's what's causing all the problems in the United States. People with no ID or Michigan ID, you know, they don't have a driver's license, never had one and they shouldn't be outside at a certain time. That's what causes trouble, complete trouble, twists the whole United States around. For people to go outside dealing drugs and not supposed to be outside at a certain time in a busy city or a overpopulated city, I think there should be a curfew in Flint at least. And there should be a curfew in every big city because that's nothing but problems. Because people get upset when they're outside to doing favors and stuff, do obscene things and hurt people. That's what I think that should happen. People with only Michigan IDs, I don't, but the licensed drivers, I think they're allowed to walk outside, but only at a certain time, more than the ID can. But I think that's what's causing all problems, just upsetting everybody. I mean, drug dealers can cover you and they can turn on you. And that drug is a very serious drug, cocaine and all the prescription drugs that are going on. They can cover and turn. The bad thing about the police are like, they get covered, but they can turn on you and hurt you real bad or take your life away. That's the problem.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today and as Councilman Neely has said earlier, you know, this is the start of a beginning. And you know, we must wait on the seven-day appeal process to get the written order from the Circuit Court, Inglewood County Circuit Court, to see exactly what the judge has ordered. And this is just a start for us to hear from you and it's just been too long, again, that we were able to come together as a community. And I appreciate everyone that has come out. We have noted, duly noted, every concern that has been expressed today. I look forward to hearing from you all again and encourage that you continue to come to the council meetings, the official council meetings or whatever meetings that we're called to bring the public together. But I want to yield to my colleagues and see if they have any closing statements.
Just real quick, I'm glad that I was able to make it. Like I said, I had a presentation that I had to do for my class. I've been doing a lot of research. The class that I'm taking is constitutional law. So I've been doing a lot of research and I've been looking at Public Act Four and a few other things too. So you know, I'm beginning to understand this process. I have to do my research and you know, people that know me know, once I get on something and I start thinking about it and looking at it for what it's worth, I'm going to come to an informed decision. So you know, I'm just very happy that I was able to get here at the time that I was able to get here and to see so many people come out. I didn't get a chance to hear all of the speakers, but I will have some dialogue with my colleagues and I know they will share your concerns with me. And then on Monday, we hope to see you at 5:30. Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for coming out and being part of the solution again. We've got our representation back and we need to take advantage of it and keep it like Mr. Mays says. That's a key right there. We need to keep it. And so let's go home and say a few prayers tonight and we'll get this right. Thank you very much.
I do want to tell you this is that the goal of this meeting was to reconnect you with your elected officials and for us to connect as a family, working to our goal. This is a start and I know what Eric talks about, but we weren't ready to give a tutorial on action steps and action plans, but it is worth coming. Trust me, there is a plan. But in order to work a plan, you have to have people to help. And I want to assure you this, when we talk about power, power has never left the bosom of the people. Everybody works for you and when you stand up and fight, stand up for democracy, you see what can be accomplished. But we all need to come together and action steps will be shortly coming before you, but we need committed people to put it forth. And the balance of the power belongs to the people. And if the people don't stand up and fight, we can't effectively do everything that we need to do. Thank you all for being here today and we will continue this. Thank you, Councilman Lawler.
Welcome back, city council. Glad to see you guys here. Councilman Neely, your video that Paul took the other day, the very... Councilman Neely, your video that Paul took the other day, the very end of the State of the City meeting, excellent politics, exactly what we want to see out of our councilmen. This half of the, the council is who I directly welcome back to, the people who are here to receive it, and will be in communication, will be attending the meetings, will be trying to work with our section of the community, and do exactly what you guys are talking here. Thanks for letting me attend, also.